It's public comment.
George?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I've not gotten anything in writing in regards to the ingress egress Avenue D and Highway ninety-three by the Holiday Inn. I want something in writing. That ingress egress is a hazard?
We've discussed that time and time again.
It does not meet code.
Sorry, sorry.
It does not meet code. You give me something in writing.
I'm sorry, George.
That's right, it's come from who? From the Department of Jurisdiction over that which is in.
No, they say that's a city.
Conversation over.
Did they give you that in writing?
Yes, they did.
Uh huh.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Under your mouth, George.
Anything else? Hearing none and seeing none. We'll move forward in the item one as a discussion for possible action. The approval of FY twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two. Renewal proposal for the White for the Fire District Property Liability Insurance from Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool. And approval for payment from the fiscal year FY twenty twenty-two funds in the amount of thirty-seven thousand forty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents. Alan Reed, Warren Insurance, and Elizabeth Francis, Finance Director. Welcome, Alan.
Welcome.
How is everybody?
Good.
It is a pleasure to be here. I got one of my six kids in tow. This is Taylor, who has been with me for six years. And we're kind of keeping an eye on dad, making sure that I got my piece of the cube squared away. Anyhow. Let's talk a little bit about the Fire District and give you an update on where we are. And I think that what we're going to see that this is really a year of good news for both the Fire District as well as the county when it comes to the insurance packages. And we'll get into the specific reasons why. But I would say that it is due in part, in fact, to your leadership, the people, the staff in the county and the Fire District. And so I'd like to open with that and address you all. Mr. Chairman, staff, fellow commissioners, Mr. Fire Chief, and so forth. I'm going to be a little broader when I talk about the Fire District because I want to try and cover a lot of specifics within their program, which also apply to county. But so I'll be a little more broad based on Fire District because I want to talk about Poole Pact in a little bit more of an entirety. And then when I get to county, we're going to go right to some numbers. But anyhow, first we talk about the Fire District. And I just want to point out a few things about Poole. And what's important is that if you see the summary report that you have, it's about a ten-page report, addresses lots of items within the Poole Pact program. One of the things that we want to lead off with is the carriers that are involved for the Fire District. They are carriers that specialize in public entities. And three of the carriers, three of the seven carriers that we use are companies by the name of government entities. Mutual, Public Risk Mutual, and County Reinsurance Limited. Not common names, but names that are specialists in the area of public entity insurance. As well, these three companies, the pool which you own. The pool has a financial stake in all three of these companies. Public Risk Mutual is privately owned captive, owned a hundred percent by the pool. And as well, the pool is an investor in government entities, Mutual, and County Reinsurance. We have other companies involved, Brit Insurance Company, Travelers, Iron Shore Insurance Company, and Boys for London. When we talk about the the pool and the membership, it's a healthy membership right now. Hundred and thirty-one members throughout the pool. Most all of the eligible entities throughout the entire state of Nevada. We don't have Clark County in there. We don't have Washoe County. They're a little bit too big and we don't want them driving our experience. Maybe someday they might be able to participate, but there are some special districts within those counties that we take in to the membership. We talked about the industry a little bit and what's going on. And right now, the industry is driven by three factors. We continue to have heavy-duty property losses in the area of wildfires. And we're having heavy-duty wind losses, especially on the East Coast with hurricanes. We're into the Greek alphabet for only the second time in history when it comes to hurricanes. So we've got some real challenges and all of these losses together all feed into this big giant funnel of reinsurance that the pool has to buy into. So worldwide events affect us. And we have the challenges in property insurance and we have challenges in liability insurance. When we talk about liability insurance, the biggest challenges are the verdicts that are coming down through the court system. Our largest, top fifty verdicts, on average, in the past few years have increased from fifty-four million on average to around eighty-eight million dollars per verdict. So a big effect on the liability market. And then we have something called nuclear verdicts. And nuclear verdicts are over one-hundred million dollars. And we're starting to see those. So real challenges in the area of liability. And in addition to liability, those two areas, there's challenges as we all will know with law enforcement. They have a real hard job in front of them trying to address all the citizens' needs. And so big challenges in that area. We continue to see problems with what we call SAM claims, sexual assault and molestation claims that continue to pop up. And those three or four factors are the areas that are impacting liability insurance. And then finally, we have the challenges within cyber insurance. And as you know, cyber insurance has been greatly affected. If you stamp up with the news, we see the things with Colonial Pipeline, JPS Meats recently hit me bows. I don't know if you've heard about the incident with a Tesla employee in Reno. He was offered half a million dollars to install a malicious malware into their operating system. Fortunately, he got caught. So there's big deals going on in the area of cyber. Southern Nevada hospitals have been greatly affected by it and lots of challenges in those areas. So we talked about those three drivers in the area of insurance. And then we get into a little more deeper into the report. And I just want to reiterate again, the pool is owned by the membership. You are one of the members, so you are actually an owner of the pool. The, one of the things that we continually want to point out is the pool has this grant for pooling resources division within the pool structure. And that is a system for awarding grants to any public entity that might be involved in applying for some type of risk reduction. And so we want to continue to point that out. The pool has one point four million dollars available this year. And it's available for you if you want to apply. You need to apply by the next meeting, which is September first, and they award grants at that time. Some recent grants that I've seen, I had a improvement district that applied for some money for security fencing of around seven old water tanks. And they received around twenty-two thousand dollars. I had another sanitation district that applied for a grant to install a box security gate at their entrance. And they received around twenty thousand dollars. So there's lots of items on there.
Can I ask you one question?
Yes, sir.
Would cameras qualify for that?
I think so. We were asked that question yesterday and I think I've seen some awards for security cameras.
We'll have to do that, thank you. That's fine.
Yeah. So the grant process is easy. I'm sure Elizabeth is familiar with it. You go to the Poole Pact website, pull down the tab that says grants. And the application's about half a page long. I think it's not very long, so. Okay. So if we move forward, how does all this translate to Fire? And when we talk about relatively good news, I can see that it's important to say that what's happening across the board, when the pool renewals were negotiated and the staff goes to London and spends time with various underwriters throughout the United States. They came back with indications that the average rate increase would be approximately seven point eight seven percent for all pool members. In addition, there would be increases anywhere from one to four percent for changes in exposures. A change in exposure might be new building, number of new cars, things like that. Well, in the final analysis for White Mountain County Fire, they're only up two percent over last year. And their renewal program cost is thirty-seven thousand and fifty dollars versus thirty-seven, thirty-six thousand one hundred and seventy-four dollars last year. So it's about a two percent increase. So again, what I would say, good news. It's a testament to staff, Fire Chief, you guys for the leadership, the job you do, and following the pool guidelines. And so we'd like to point that out. Also, when we talk about the renewal, we talk about the property casualty cost for the pool program. This thirty-seven thousand and fifty dollars figure. We go to the next area of coverage, and that's the workers' compensation. And the workers' compensation also reduced by first, and it's through the PAC, Public Agency Compensation Trust. The thing that we report at this time, we just talked about the rates. And the base rates for PAC have gone up approximately eight point nine percent due to a number of reasons. Medical inflation, social inflation, increased attorney's fees, expanded legal costs, and so forth. But however, in the case of White Mountain County Fire, their experience mod dropped approximately three percentage points from point eight-eight to point eight-five. So they might be looking at around a six percent base rate increase. They have had an increase in payroll, so, but that's the short version of what's going on with White Mountain County. Also, the challenges that exist within the area of workers' compensation. I don't know if Senator Gobertia is still here, but there's always bills that have to do with workers' compensation and they're always very challenging. So I'm sure they dealt with more than their share of them this year. And, but that's one of the things that the insurance company, you have to as well contend with. So, so that's the, that's the quick state of the union report for Fire. If you look at that booklet, there's a whole bunch of good information within it. There's comparison sheets that show you from last year to this year. There's some coverage summaries. There's some real nice graphs that show a ten-year lookback of what's happened to county fire over the years. And we can see what's happened with our program costs. We're pretty darn stable. We've gone up a little bit, down a little bit, and we're pretty stable over the past three years for Fire. We can see though correspondingly that our insurance values have grown over the years, which any good district is going to have growth because you're going to have new buildings and properties, new vehicles, et cetera. And, and Fire has about three million dollars worth of buildings and contents insured. They have another million and a quarter of equipment insured. And they have about eight point four million dollars worth of vehicles insured. So, so they've got some pretty big exposures. Loss ratio, loss record has been outstanding. We had only two thousand twelve, last year in ten, and we've had some losses. So again, testament to staff, leadership, county direction, and so forth there. At the very end of the booklet, if anybody is so inclined, there are complete schedules of all the vehicles, all the properties insured, the limits that we have them insured for, the equipment list. And finally, there is a workers' compensation page that shows your base rates going through the next year for firefighters as well as their staff. So that is county fire, pool, and PAC. And?
I'd just like to point out real quickly that the amount that is on the invoice is within the budget for next year. And also that the higher figure for vehicle is due to the fact that our emergency vehicles are done at replacement value and not at existing value. So that would explain why we have some higher, like it's better to.
Any questions by any way on the commission?
I'd like also to say that since we're both in number one and two, you could open two and just vote one to the vote.
Okay. You know, I'll do that real quick. Do you have to ask for a motion?
You.
Okay, I'll read number two and ask for a motion on both. Item number two on page three, it goes with number one, is discussion for possible action. The approval of workers' compensation insurance renewal proposal for the Fire District from Nevada Public Agency and Compensation Trust PAC. And approval for payment from FY twenty twenty-two funds based on the rates outlined in the backup material. Alan Reed and Elizabeth Francis. So at this time, I'd look for a motion for it. Any commission, anything to ask about that? If not, I would motion on item number one and item number two.
Move to proof, go by item one and two.
Okay, motion by Travis?
Second.
Second by Lori. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, passioned out of this. Okay, thank you for that. We'll move on to item number three. On page three is a discussion for possible action. The approval of FY twenty-one twenty-two renewal proposal for county property slash liability insurance, including possible amended deductible from the Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool. And approval for payment from FY twenty twenty-two funds in the amount not to exceed three hundred ninety-four thousand three hundred forty-one dollars and nine cents. Alan Reed and Elizabeth Francis.
And Mr. Chairman, if we can also open item four, because it's going to have the same overlap.
Okay, so we'll do four at the same time. Item four is discussion for possible action. Approval of the count, approval of workers' compensation. Proposal for the county from Nevada Public Agency Compensation Trust PAC. And approval for payment from FY twenty twenty-two funds based on the rates outlined in the backup material. Alan Reed, Warren Reed Insurance, and Elizabeth Francis. So items three and four are open.
Okay. So now we get to county and let's do a deep dive back into the numbers. And we go back to page ten of the report and we talk about the cost summary. Again, we've got all the property schedules in the back and all of the vehicle schedules, so given the amount of coverage, there's approximately thirty-eight and a half million dollars on buildings and contents. There's about eight, one to nine million dollars worth of equipment insured. And then we have a whole bunch of vehicles, about two hundred and eight that we have insured. And is this our first year with Tri-Tunny Weave in, or is this our second?
This would be our second we've transported.
So in the past two years, we brought on Weave into the picture. And I believe, if I recall correctly, that was about fourteen vehicles and some property. And we pick up their exposures liability-wise for payroll as well as pollution. So we get into, we get in like the county and we look at numbers. And we see that last year, our premium was around three hundred eighty-two thousand dollars and some change. And this year, if we stuck with the same deductible, we would be approximately three hundred ninety-four thousand three hundred forty-one dollars. Okay? What Elizabeth and I did was took a dive into looking at higher deductibles, especially with coming up at the new Justice Center, about thirty-five million dollar property. We decided it would be time to take a gamble and see if they generated any savings that would be worthwhile. And in the case of the county, significant savings if we want to amend the deductible. And we, so we did an analysis on where we were with the last deductible of a thousand dollars. And then we looked at three options, increasing the deductible to either five thousand, ten thousand, or twenty-five thousand. And you can see in that follow-up letter behind the, the report, we're showing the program cost for the four deductibles, anywhere from three hundred ninety-four thousand three hundred forty-one dollars and nine cents all the way down to three hundred eleven thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-one cents. So obviously, we take a look at that twenty-five thousand dollar deductible and we see that we can save about eighty-two thousand dollars by going to that higher deductible. So what do we do when we look at that? We try to do an analysis to see if it's cost-effective for you to take the higher deductible. We look at your costs under the previous deductibles. And then as we project into the future, we see what your cost would have been if we took those higher deductibles versus any premium savings. And we see if we come out ahead or behind the date. In bad years, we don't do very well. In good years, we do pretty good. And in the case of White Mountain County, we're the past thirty-plus years, probably have four, maybe five or six. Four years that are kind of dicey, tough, and a couple of years that might be kind of moderately tough. So we look at that picture and we said, six years out of thirty-plus, that's about one tough year out of every five or six. So we look at that and then we take those numbers of those bad years, we project them into the future. We bring them all in the future today to say, what would happen if we had those bad years? So we look at the claims, we analyze the savings, we look at the increased costs through the deductible change, and we see where we come out. And if you look at the scenario, we always call it Black Swan scenario, which is kind of the darkest of dark scenarios to show where we would be. And we see that if we threw all four of the four toughest years together and we took the twenty-five thousand dollar deductible, we'd lose about fifty-five thousand dollars. Okay? If we took the ten thousand dollar deductible, we'd lose about twenty-eight thousand. But remember too, that's four bad years all lumped together. We're kind of presenting a world war picture. And hopefully, we don't see that. So then we come back to the fact and we say, is that likely to happen? That we're going to have four bad years in a row? Well, it's possible, but it may not be totally likely. So if you're a betting man, you might say, well, I think I might go with the higher deductible. So then we project and we look at the past five years and we look at your experience to see what you've done and see what would happen if we'd have taken the higher deductible. And we can see that we would have saved about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars from two thousand fifteen through two thousand twenty. We don't look at two thousand twenty, twenty-one because that year is not concluded. And so we have another few weeks and maybe losses will settle out, maybe some will go up, maybe some will go down. So we don't look at that year. We look at the previous five and we see it's probably a decent picture. Okay? So if we're to look at that and say, we could go to a twenty-five thousand dollar deductible, we could save a little more than eighty-two thousand dollars, then it might be a good thing. The other thing we throw in there is it's a county of growth and your exposures are changing. We're looking at a new thirty-five million dollar Justice Center. So we're going to increase our insurance costs just off that item alone. The Justice Center premium is probably fifty to sixty thousand dollars, probably sixty thousand dollars because you've got a lot of coverage. You've got thirty-five million. Remember, you only have thirty-two million in buildings right now, so you're basically doubling the building exposure. So that fire portion of the premium is going up significantly. But then again, if we take the higher deductible, we can probably chop that down to around forty-nine thousand dollars. Okay? And then finally, on top of that, we have to remember that this first year is not that bad because we don't know when we're adding the Justice Center, but we think it might be around the end of the third quarter. So we're going to have about three months' worth of premium that we don't have to contend with. So, and so when we look at the Justice Center and we talk about the increased deductibles that I just talked about, plus we could throw in something if we take the increased deductible on the Justice Center. So maybe that eighty thousand dollar savings now starts to translate into ninety thousand. Remember though, that this is, this is conjectural, it's a little bit of speculation. But based upon the track record that you have, we could say with a confidence level, that's an actuarial term that insurance companies use, that you're probably not going to have bad years here in your hour. So you might be okay. I think Elizabeth and I, in our discussions, we, we kind of think the higher deductible is warranted. And pocket some money and take it to the bank and do something else with it. And, and then go from there.
On the deductible, because it is a brand-new building and state-of-the-art and the chances of pipe breaking and different types of stuff like that, you're probably better off with the higher deductible because of chances of a major fault and we have insurance right through the contractor for a couple of years warranty, do we?
A one-year warranty.
There you go. So by going with the higher, and I'm just voice of mine. By going to the higher deductible on a brand-new, state-of-the-art building, chances of pipe breaking or whatever are covered twofold. So maybe a higher deductible for the cost savings would be more prudent.
Yeah, and you're right, Mr. Chairman. Your chance of loss is probably greater over here in the old courthouse than it is down there whether it be a property loss or a liability claim. So yeah, you're a hundred percent right.
Unfortunately, the old courthouse is still going to be on our, in our portfolio, so.
Don't get rid of that. Those are beautiful buildings, so.
Yeah.
It's a great building, so I hear you though on that. So, so you get to see that and you get to look at all the reasons in the analysis letter behind that first report why you could do. And you get both a pretty positive picture and then you get a negative picture if you have a few bad years in a row. And kind of hope that, that it's not going to happen, yeah, so.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, I'd like to make just a recommendation that we do look at going to that higher deductible and the cost savings that we would affect this year. We go ahead and we, we put those funds as a commitment to cover future deductibles. Now, we are saving their money, but you're recognizing that down the line somewhere, you're going to have a bad year and you're going to need that additional fund. You can keep those as committed fund balance and you can invest those so that they are in trust and have cost savings now. And understand that this is not a permanent, because it's going to fluctuate, but overall, we should be able to save money in the long.
And, and Elizabeth is right in saying that. And the best way to do that is when you move to a higher deductible, you take in your case, we determine actuarially, you should take three deductibles, twenty-five thousand times three. You should set that money aside and watch your kitty for the future. And it's a, it's good reserve. Insurance companies use reserving practices all the time. So it's something that you do. And then you get into twenty-two twenty-two, you might add two more deductibles. So, and you might add more in the future. And you build that fund up so big that, number one, it's useful in the event of a catastrophic year. But secondly, it's just a backstop to your entire insurance program and it's a wise thing to do. And any large company that moves more and more to this area that we call or refer to as self-insurance, you're the insurance company, up to that twenty-five thousand dollar limit, that's what they do, so. Oh, I think after that, I touch bases on the workers' comp. Again, the workers' comp, same picture as Fire, eight point nine percent base rate increase. But an even better picture from a experience modification standpoint, I think you guys dropped nine points on the, on your X mod. I'm just going to look at that last page and not be stupid and make sure that I give you the right number. You dropped two point eight six, one point nine five. So, so nine, eight point nine percent base rate change, about nine-point improvement in experience modification. If payroll is stable, you're probably in pretty good shape there. So that's the workers' comp picture.
Any questions by anybody? Elizabeth, you got any follow-up or anything like that you want to add?
I would recommend that we go to twenty-five thousand dollar deductible. That is a cost savings of eight three thousand one thirty-eight over what I have budgeted. We can keep that in the budget and set that aside as a commitment for future deductibles, realizing that we're going to have bad years where we're going, it's going to catch up. So you want to set that aside. But I think it would be a good alternative for the county at this time. We do have a safety committee that's been formed under Tim to make him for working on that and getting that safety.